Good evening, everybody. My name is Donald Campbell. I'm the Chair of the Select Board, and I guess I'd like to ask everybody to introduce themselves, starting with our Town Manager, please.
I'm Stuart Hurd, Town Manager.
Jean Connor.
Bruce Lee Clark.
Jeannie Jenkins.
Nancy Black, Secretary of State, all by myself.
Move down!
She's happy over there. So Chad knew he wasn't going to be able to be here tonight, and he let us know at the last meeting. And Jim headed up for Montpelier this afternoon in anticipation of some bad weather tomorrow, so he's not with us tonight either. But he did say he was going to be watching it on Cat TV, so he's probably watching us right now. So it's a good time to make jokes about him, if anyone's got anything. So we are here to talk tonight about a local options tax, and that's all we're here to talk about tonight. We're not going to do any of our other meeting things. I think it might be worth just giving a brief overview of what we've done and where we think we're going, so that people know what the process is from here out. So the Charter Committee spent a long time, a year or more ago, thinking about this concept, and it was embedded in the Charter, which was passed officially this fall by the Legislature. And that allows the town to have a vote on whether or not a 1% options tax goes into place. And so the Board has debated, over the course of the fall and the winter, whether or not it makes sense to put this to the voters. And we have decided that it does make sense to put it to the voters, because it has a potentially very real impact on people, both in terms of their property taxes and in terms of the consumer taxes that they might pay at the store or somewhere else. It's probably worth, just if I could summarize what I think the Board's thinking is, and if the Board would like to correct me, feel free, but I think the reason we're offering this to the community, the most compelling reasons that we felt it really should go in front of the community were, number one, to take a little bit of pressure off of property taxes, to kind of share the burden between property tax and consumer tax; number two, to do more for the community without relying on property taxes. So more business from marketing, more recreational attractions, more capacity for big ideas; number three, to try to reduce the town's reliance on short-term debt and thus paying less interest; and number four, to help mitigate external costs, such as healthcare, that by itself was responsible for 42% of the municipal tax increase this year. So I think we're coming into this meeting relatively open-minded, but the bottom line is, should the entire cost of running our town be paid for by property taxes? Or should some part of that, approximately 10% in this case, of the annual budget be derived from a local options tax? And we are here to both hear a little bit of information that the town has pulled together for us, but also to hear from you, and to hear your opinions, and to give everybody a chance to speak up about this. So before I -- okay, so next step. So I think what we're looking for is, tonight we'll have this conversation, if the Board would like to, I would like at our next meeting to consider passing a local options tax revenue spending guideline policy, or call it a local options tax policy. And we've laid that out already. It would potentially look something like this. If a local options tax is approved by the voters, the following Select Board policy will be effective immediately. And then the same words that we had before. The Bennington Select Board recognizes the importance of community dialogue and input during the annual budget sessions, and will establish two additional public meetings every year during budget season to designate spending guidelines for any revenue created by a local options tax. And I would add, these revenues will be held in reserve and may only be spent according to the agreed-upon annual guidelines for that tax year. So I don't think we need to make a motion on that this meeting, but I would love, I think we should aspire to try to move something like that into policy next meeting, so that if the voters vote, they know exactly what the program is. Does that sound right to everybody? Okay. So we have a couple of presentations tonight, and they should be fairly brief. The first one, I asked Stuart if he would give us, if he would give us, call it a tax primer. But from my conversations with people in the community, it's very clear to me that a lot of people don't understand how the taxes work, and it is very difficult to understand, so that's completely understandable. But I'm hoping that Stuart can help us clear the air a little bit, and if you would be willing to, in layman's terms, as much as possible, just lay out what we control and what we don't control, so that we're all on the same page before we start this conversation, that'd be great.
I will attempt to do that. As most of you know, the tax that you pay is made up of the town and the school taxes. The town tax is made up of a general fund tax, which uses the grand list of the entire community, including Bennington, Old Bennington, and North Bennington. The highway fund tax, which only uses the grand list of the former village of Bennington. It does not include Old Bennington or North Bennington, because they have their own highway tax. And the fire tax, which includes just the former village of Bennington. It does not include the Bennington Rural, nor does it include North Bennington. So as you descend, the grand list that you're looking at for tax, creating taxes that are town taxes, actually decreases. I'll throw this out there, because this does make up part of the town tax. There's what's called the local school tax. And it's made up of those taxes that are, or that assessed value that is lost, because the community voted to give the veterans an exemption of up to $40,000 on their assessed value, if you are at least 50% disabled. The state provides the first 10% through legislation, so that does not count. But every percent over that works against the community in a sense that we now must make up the difference in school taxes. So this is a town tax, which literally subsidizes the school tax the state generates, complex as it is. Last year, FY '20, the municipal tax was 45% of the school tax. That difference has been as low as 33% for town tax, 67% for school. This year, or the past year, was 45 to 55. And if you recall, the school tax actually decreased over a couple of years because of increases in the grand list and changes in the formula, which are, I don't know, and I won't try to explain them to you. So when we look at what tax this will actually impact, it is only the town tax. It will not change your school taxes at all. And there's an example that we provide to you later in this presentation, that if that example were to be utilized in the current proposed budget, so this is the budget that has not yet been approved, but is on the ballot. If that percentage was utilized, it would reduce the town tax for every individual property owner in Bennington by 8%. So it's not dramatic, but it is a reduction. And when we looked at the impact of the proposed budget that you'll be voting on, that impact was 3 point something percent, 3.5%, I think. So you would actually see a reduction in your property taxes if all of this were to come into play. We use this as an example, because it's a budget we know, and it's a budget that is coming to you. But it may not be what the Board ultimately decides to do, because that is in their purgatory. So recognize that your school tax will not change based on whatever you do here, but your local town tax can be impacted in a way that will reduce it. And of course, we will talk later on about what other revenue this might provide to the town that we can use to do things that are not in the budget, but that are important to the community. How's that?
Yeah, I think that --
Clear as mud.
Well, I think the first part may have been a little confusing, but hopefully the last part is clarifying to some people, that there's a big chunk of this, of your taxes that get paid, that this town has no control over. It's all controlled by the schools. And so that's, that works both ways in this argument. Honestly, it's, on the one hand, it means that we have control over a relatively small portion of the taxes, somewhere between a third and 45% of the taxes. And so the impact is likely to be relatively small on taxes. On the other hand, if you don't do anything, we know what happens to taxes. They just keep going up. So this is the balance that we're talking about tonight. Shannon, how's your technology doing? Wow, looks just like the handout.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks to Mike, we got it to work. And everyone has, a lot of you have this as well. So I am just giving a little overview of what the local option tax is, how it works, how it's working in other communities, and then we're going to open it up to public comment. So the local option tax allows towns to generate more revenue by adding an extra 1% to the sales tax, which is currently 6%, or 1% to meals and rooms, which is currently 9%, or and/or a 1% additional tax to alcohol, which is currently at a 10% rate. So the way that this is going to be on our ballot, it's going to be broken into four different items. So you can vote for each piece, whether it's retail sales, meals, rooms, or alcohol. So that 1%, you know, that's one penny on the dollar, or $1 to $100. So it's actually, you know, for each individual, a fairly small amount, but it adds up. This additional revenue raised by the local option tax is divided, so that 70% of it goes to the town, and 30% goes to the state. That 30% of revenue that goes to the state is used to reimburse municipalities for state-owned buildings in their towns, and also to cover the state's administrative costs of operating this local option tax program. So 20 Vermont municipalities, including the towns of Manchester, Rutland Town, Wilmington, and Brattleboro, have a local option tax on sales and/or meals, rooms, and alcohol. Actually, those four of our closest neighbors have all four of the local option taxes. So this is kind of numbers-heavy, I'm sorry, it's not a little easier to read, but the point of this slide is really just to show, if you look at the very bottom, for FY fiscal year 2015 compared to fiscal year 2019, you can see that retail sales every year are consistently going up, although it looks like maybe not in '16 to '17 on that one. And then meals, rooms, and alcohol, you see those numbers. And if you go across, you see the total of all of the above for 2019 is almost $185 million. And then 1% of that is $1.85 million. And then, broken down again, this is just for the last fiscal year, that total $1.8 million, if the state, if we take 70% of that, we're left with almost $1.3 million. So that's the total revenue that the town would bring in if all four of these local option taxes passed. So that's a significant number. But an important thing to remember is, when we're talking about retail sales, many things are exempt. So there's a much more detailed list of exemptions, it's on the Vermont Department of Taxes website. But these are your basics, you know, your basic needs, groceries, prescription medications, over-the-counter medications, medical equipment and supplies, clothing, fuel for home heating, motor vehicles, they're subject to a purchase and use tax, but not to retail sales tax, farm equipment, and energy for manufacturing. And then Donald mentioned this. So one of the things that's come up in talking to different community groups is, you know, people want to know, how would this revenue be spent? And are less comfortable with the idea of it going into the general fund, and what's the process for community dialogue around how this tax revenue could be spent? And so this is the proposed policy to make that process happen every year. We've also, yes?
I think you have to go, you skipped over one slide that showed how some of the municipalities are using it.
I'm sorry, which one?
Go back one more. There you go.
Oh, sorry about that. I don't know how I skipped through that. This is important. This is the piece that we've done since last time, researching other towns. So I reached out to all of the different town managers, Manchester, Rutland Town, Wilmington, and Brattleboro, and I only heard back from Manchester, Wilmington, and Brattleboro, but we heard a little bit about how they're using this income. So Manchester and Brattleboro are, a significant portion is going to property tax reduction. So that's both to lower the overall tax, but also to keep it level. So Manchester's had this tax for some time, about 20 years. So they, the town manager in Manchester really sees it as an engine for economic development, because they're able to say, "We're investing in the town, we're bringing in more revenue, but we're keeping our property tax rate low." We heard the same thing from Brattleboro, too, as far as how they decided to, why they decided to pass this. But this breaks it down into how they've used some of those additional funds as well, besides the property tax reduction. So Manchester has used a lot for their recreation facilities, so this year, for example, they built a new skate park. And the way that they're, you know, allocating these funds, I think, similar to Brattleboro, is during the town meeting day process, and during the budget process, they're really looking at, what are the community needs? You know, I think in the case of the skate park, a community group went to the town, advocated for that as a necessity, and that's one of the reasons that it was funded. In Brattleboro, they have also used the funds for, to increase, they have something called a sustainability fund, so they recently hired a sustainability coordinator to sort of enact what their energy committee is working on for their town, as well as a new town marketing campaign that they've just initiated, and more arts programming. In Rutland, what I could find online was that they're really, it's really more of a general fund, police department, and municipal budget, is how they're using that. Rutland, the city of Rutland, because there's Rutland Town and then there's Rutland City, has been, has had its own rooms and meals tax for some time. So they don't do this particular program, because they already have their own. And then Wilmington was unique, in that they have something that's, when they did their ballot article, they said that they wanted it to go towards community and economic development. So they put 80% into a fund, that's like a matching grant fund, so different community groups can go to the town, they can, they have a proposal, and they say, you know, "We have the match for this, but we would like to fund this." And so it's gone to, you know, building repairs, it's gone to new businesses, community parks, things like that, events as well. So that was sort of a unique approach that they've taken, compared to the other towns. Okay, back to that policy, sorry about that. So when the town staff has looked at these numbers, and looked at our budget for this year, what are the things that we would like to be doing more of, but we haven't been able to? We came up with this, these proposed numbers for using any potential local option tax revenue. So 50% could go towards overall property tax reduction, 20%, one of the needs that we have in the town is to reduce our debt on the vehicles that we've purchased, or the equipment that we've purchased for the town. So our current debt is $528,900. And so if we put 20% towards debt reduction, that lowers our debt, and it also, we're not paying the interest on that debt, which I believe is currently $40,000 a year. So, and then if you go across the chart, this breaks it down into what those numbers would look like. So 20% is about $258,000. And that same number could also go towards another immediate need that we have in town, which is Willow Park, and replacing Willow Park, which we currently do not have in the budget.
You just mean the play structure by this, yeah? When you say replacing Willow Park, the Willow Park community-built play structure will not last very much longer.
Yes. Exactly. It's past its life expectancy. And then the final item is to increase the budget for town marketing. We currently have enough to do what we're doing, which is all online marketing, but there's, if we want to, you know, do other forms of marketing, whether that's print, radio, television, et cetera, we don't have any budget for that. So those are the proposed numbers that we've come up with, and we're here tonight to hear your ideas for how these funds could also be used by the town. And finally, these are, if you break down that overall number that was going towards property tax reduction, this is how it would break down for each individual household. So if your property value is $100,000, they're your savings, and so on. So that's what we have.
Shannon, thank you very much for that. Before we go into public comment, is there anything from any of the Board members that you'd like to say, you'd like to correct me on? No? Okay.
Donald, if I could, just to clarify, the numbers that we showed up there are using the proposed budget for the current year and a proposed system of use. They are really meant to be an example of how it might change the budget, not necessarily that the Board is focused on doing exactly that. This is an example of how the money could be used.
Right, sure. So other priorities could be absolutely used to change those percentages. Yeah, I think the other thing is, that by being a percentage, it takes it away from being a dollar figure. So it is possible, as you probably know, if you've been following this, that some of these taxes might pass and some might fail. So there'll be four of them on the ballot, and it's very possible that one or two might pass, and one or two might not pass. And so it didn't make sense to put a dollar number in there, not knowing what the voters are going to want to do with this. And so we have been talking about it in terms of percentages at this point. But I would say that I think there's been enough discussion that we, that we need to add a little bit to the end of that potential local option tax policy, that is very clear about the funds being used exactly as they were designated in that tax year.
I would say that the proposed policy can use some perfection, yes.
Sure. So let's work on that by next week. So Shannon, I appreciate the fact that you did that work. Thank you for doing that. I know that you have a lot of other work going on, too. And if you haven't seen the little handout that she did, there's this other handout, which is also quite helpful, that is a little bit older, but there is information out there and on the town website, and readily available, if you'd like it. So I think what I'd like to do is to move into public comment, and I'm not sure how many people would like to comment, but why don't we do this? Why don't we go ahead and have everybody who wants to comment, go ahead and comment once, and then we'll let everybody have a first chance at speaking. And if anybody would like to speak a second time, after everybody's had a first chance to speak, we'll let people speak a second time. So I would like to ask everybody to, just a couple of ground rules, really, try to keep your comments, you know, three minutes would, in the three-minute range would be very helpful. If it needs to go a little longer, we have time tonight, but I would love to have everybody be able to get their thoughts in tonight. Secondly, you know, let's remember that this is difficult. It's not a slam dunk one way or the other. It's a kind of nuanced policy decision about how we raise funds in our community for the necessities of town government. And as always, let's just keep it from being, let's not let it get personal. This is just a conversation about what we, what is best for our community, and ultimately, the voters are going to decide. So let's just try to keep the tone down a little bit on it, if we can. And with that said, I'm not quite sure, who would like, who would like to start? Someone that would, Laura, would you like to be our first speaker?
Yeah.
Okay. So since you're, okay. So I am going to ask you, and ask everybody, for the sake of Cat TV, to go ahead and give your name, and tell us what's on your mind.
Laura Block from Bennington.
Thank you.
I have a question, and I don't know if anybody can answer this, but Stu, you might be able to, because we were listening to the NPR interview, I think you were participating in that a few days ago, I don't know when it was done, and the tax commissioner was there. And there was a discussion about the taxes coming in from online sales. In other words, not people who are literally buying stuff in person in town, but online sales. And his answer, the tax commissioner gave sort of an answer that I didn't understand. And so what happens to that money? Can you explain that? Do we get it?
Yeah. It's not clear what happens to that money.
Okay, so I didn't listen.
Online sales organizations now have to pay the Vermont state taxes when they make a sale. The difficulty for the tax department, as I understand it, is they don't know necessarily where that sale originates. So from their perspective, it's hard to allocate those funds, whether it's to Bennington, or Manchester, or Brattleboro, where there is, there may be a 1% option tax. They may not know, based on the reporting of the online salespeople, where that money is supposed to go, or if in fact, they're supposed to collect the additional 1%. So I think that's something they're working on, because online sales taxes being paid into the, into the state are relatively new. I think it's within the last two or three years that they have finally agreed to collect those taxes. So I think that's the confusion, and I can't, I don't have an answer for you, I'm equally confused. It's not clear to me how the tax department will decide or figure out how to work that out.
Okay. That's the best I can do. But this tax, this 1% tax is in addition to, it's for any online sale as well, if they're collecting.
The problem, though, as I understand it, as I was listening as well, and then when looked, and the problem is, is that they don't even know whether to collect that tax, because the retailer doesn't know that Bennington, or Manchester, or Wilmington has a 1% additional. Nobody's telling them. So it may be supposedly for that, but it, right now, it doesn't look like that's, I can't say for sure, because I don't think anybody knows, but it appears from the question and from the answer and from other people, that they don't know whether they're even collecting it, the added one. They are collecting the regular state sales tax, because they know that. But the difference between somebody ordering in Woodford and somebody ordering from L.L. Bean in Bennington is not something that L.L. Bean will know, and therefore, they won't be able to collect the additional 1%. That's the problem.
Well, it seems like it comes from a state, a state.
That's right.
It's one that is, it's a perfect example of, it's a state problem, not something we can solve.
Right. So why don't I go right straight across the first row, and then I'll go right straight across the second row, and work my way back like that? So Shannon, you're out. Rose, are you, did you have your hand up? No? Okay.
I'll say something.
Matt, come on up.
Matt, can you close the computer?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, sir.
I'm Matt Willie. I really wasn't prepared to speak here, but I will. Just, you know, owning three businesses in this town here, you know, paying the property taxes on all three of them, even though I don't own them, but I still pay strip on that, so... so I pay them all. And also owning businesses, have owned businesses in North Adams and Williamstown, which both towns have that tax, this tax as well. You know, one of them being, one of them having a mayor, one of them having a select board, seeing how different all three of these towns operate, and being, and hopefully going to Manchester and opening a business up there. I think my, my point on this, and my feeling, is I'm for it, if the money's used in the right way. In that I feel, to be completely honest with you, that if, if these people are going to make it in the right way. I know it's just going to be the voters that are deciding this. But the way this was kind of just thrown at us, I feel, was kind of rushed. And I just feel like that's how everything's going to happen, and it'll just end up in the general fund. And everybody will still be paying more for my pizza and my tacos, regardless. So, I'm concerned with that. And seeing what Jonah said at the first meeting was, to me, spot on. This town just needs something big. And it's a call it a pipe dream, whatever, whatever we want. At least he's throwing it out there. You know, the guy that Bruce Redd from buying SVC, you know, yeah, that's a huge ask. I know all that. But it's out there, right? I mean, this town needs something big. I see what's going on in Manchester, with, you know, with what their town manager is doing up there. He's so active and so in that community. And he's dreaming big, right? Field houses, and, you know, bringing Division One sports, and just trying to drag all these families just into this little Manchester, because he sees that, you know, the outlet's not working. And, and the same thing, you know, the mayor that was in North Adams. He was awesome. He always came to my place. The select board in Williamstown, same thing. These guys were so active. So, I think for me, you know, I afford this, but I would love to see it be used to kind of put Bennington back on the map, you know, in Vermont. So, just might do that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I'm Sheila Harden. Bennington Potters is my responsibility. And I have about two business experiences in Bennington over the last 50 years. I was essentially the Brestre Restaurant, so I'm very familiar with restaurants and very familiar with retail stores. The tax will be a burden to Bennington Potters. And it seems to me to be really important that we do this. So, I'm totally in favor of it. And it's a significant percentage increase. I don't dare increase my pottery prices by that amount. Do you see? That kind of thing. So, I think it's important for me to make clear that my being entirely in favor of it is because we need to continue to move the needle in Bennington. We've had a really extraordinary sort of black swan event, which is the putting together of all the wacky, amazing people, of which I was one, although a small part, to do the Putnam Project. And I feel as though things are really moving, and that what we really want is Bennington, I'll echo Matt, but Bennington needs to be remarkable. What does that mean? That means things happening that people are talking about. And that attracts young people, attracts businesses of the wacky kind, like David Gill, Ed Levin, Bob Howe, Carriel. So, I want to speak against the idea of using it to lower property taxes. I want us very, very much to think about whether or not we can find a different way to lower property taxes in the places where it's needed. But I think the opportunity of a economically, socially, to some sense, down-on-our-heels place that's coming up, the idea that all of us would decide that we wanted to put all of this money into moving the needle. And yes, that can include things like lowering debts and things like that. But the thing about basically putting it into reduction of property taxes, I prefer not to have my property taxes lowered. I prefer to contribute this money to basically moving the needle in Bennington. A really exciting idea that Alan Carriel had was that, that big mill that he had. And he was really interested in seeing if he could build studio space that people in New York City could rent, because you can come up on the train. And everything's priced too high down farther south. You see, those kinds of things. I really, really urge us to think about using the Wilmington model. And basically, having it, having it be matching stuff. And it doesn't have to be equal, equal matching, but that lets us have the designers and the developers of the projects do the work, and then come and pitch it to us members of the town. Do we want to invest money in that? And that's what I, because I want to see, I'm totally with you. I want it to be really good. And I know there's terrific, terrific energy in this town. I mean, if we could just give Matthew Perry $20,000 and say, "Go, team." I mean, it's amazing. I do amazing things with really small amounts of money. Nobody asks me to do it. I do it because it needs to happen, and because I need the juice for it and from it, do you see? And I've been involved with small groups, and we get juice from that. So, please think about, nothing can happen without resources. Please think about juicing all of the juice that's here by having there be a process whereby people can get support and help. There's been such a change in the capital available to wacky people like David Gill, and Ed Levin, and Bob Howe, and et cetera. Nowadays, basically, banks are all working on quick ratios. They're working on cash. It's really hard to get money if you're a hippie, or an artist, or a left-wing anarchist, or whatever it is. And the great Bennington that I remember in the '60s and '70s had an awful lot of that. And so, I just want to put that out there. And I would like to work on, for the people for whom not getting a relief for their, for their property taxes, let's find a different way to do that, instead of coming at this 1% fund. Because I think if we decide not, I just did the math right here, and I'll stop in just a second. I looked at the retail sales. They're creeping up. We're not growing. They're creeping up. And retail is the, is the, retail and restaurants is the social public activity that we all do in this country. That's what, when people come to town and look around, it's what's happening, you see? And it's, are there cool places to go eat, drink? And then, are there cool places to go shop that are not cookie cutter? Because you guys can do the math, and this is Bennington Potter's experience, too, which is that increase was half a percent increase. Half a fucking percent. Work as hard as we do, half a percent increase.
You mean from F18 to F19? But it's, it's north of 11 million in the last five years.
Okay. That's great. That's not what we're seeing. Do you see what I mean? And so, I'm not, I mean, yes, there's great things happening. But that's a tiny increase in terms of retail, half a percent. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you very much. And we did give these five years so that, acknowledging that it's not steady every year, that it does go up and down, yeah, as the years go by, yeah.
I'm not bashing anything.
No, I understand.
Here's a shot that could be really exciting.
Thank you very much for those thoughts.
Hi. My name is Colleen Harrington, and I'm running for candidate for select board. And my thoughts on this earlier, well, last week, I was on a program for the Vermont Public Radio. Mr. Hurd was part of it, and the town manager for Manchester, Mr. O'Keefe. And I think he really, the money has been vetted out what goes where. And I think why Manchester is successful and why it works up there is because the town is comprised of 4,400 permanent residents. And most of their revenue that's coming in isn't, it's not the retail side, it's the other side, the meals, taxes, and alcohol. That's where their big revenue is coming from. And that's the tourism, people coming into the state. And I think that works, because they rebranded themselves a few years back as a recreational destination. And it worked for them. And, but the opposite is true in Bennington. The main portion of the sales comes, or the money comes from retail sales, instead of the meals, rooms, and alcohol. And that comes off the backs of the community members who are already struggling to pay bills and get by. And, you know, with no business plan or proposal of exactly where this money would be spent. And, and there's some questionable spending items that are overpriced or inflated. And I think until there's more transparency in the numbers, within the community members being involved and seeing these projects and where this, these outrageous numbers are coming from for some of the things, like the salt shed, for example, then I think that it's being pushed on us too quickly, and it's just not a right time for the 1% tax in Bennington. Because it just doesn't make sense not, not to be moved this quickly with no solid plan as to where the money's going to be spent exactly. Because there's no guarantee that it's going to lower property taxes. And the numbers from Manchester are $800,000 for meals, rooms, and alcohol versus $300,000 for the retail sales, where it's the opposite in Bennington. It's $800,000 and $400,000 for meals, rooms, and alcohol. So, I just think that it's a far different comparison. And I think more projections and numbers, and a better plan needs to be in place before we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So, let's see.
Sorry. I jumped the gun on you, Don.
Yeah, that's right.
Kevin Hoy, Bennington. Again, a little disappointed. We kind of missed the national anthem before the meeting. So, I don't know if we could try to get that next time. It would be really cool. As most of you guys know, I've run conservation programs around the globe for about 20 years. I've hosted and produced national television. We own up to 108 million homes. And I want to talk a little bit about marketing. I've heard a lot of people talk about marketing. I think that's really important. Again, 85% of the state's income comes--
Could you speak more into the microphone?
Sure. About 85%, sorry, of the state's income comes from travel and tourism. And I know here in Bennington, the governor came out with the, I think it was called VORAC, the Vermont Outdoor Recreational Economic Collaborative. And unfortunately, Bennington missed the boat on this. This was about a decade ago. I know right now, again, for marketing, why do people come to Vermont, right? And I think, believe it or not, the answer is nothing, to do nothing. I'm sure the nature and the outdoors has a lot to do with it, the wonderful people that we have here. But it's about to hunt, to fish, to hike, to ski, to canoe, to ride a mountain bike, to go down and see a covered bridge. Outdoors, outdoors, outdoors. Again, I know that we spend $0 on outdoor networks and marketing. And I know that, because I've pissed at you guys at unbelievable, incredible savings for decades now, and they're ignored. Instead, we choose to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on marketing projects with out-of-state advertising agencies. The last one was Atlas out of Denver, Colorado. And I'm talking about the amount of money we're spending. We could, we could produce Disney-style marketing campaigns. And I'm just not seeing that return. So, again, I'd like to see Bennington and Vermont stay focused a little more on our outdoor natural resources and outdoor recreation, because I think that's really all we have. People aren't coming here for a fabulous nightlife, right? The 1% sales tax that we're talking about, again, no matter what happens with this money, it's a lot of money, almost $2 million bucks, right? We get a little over $1 million of it. But we're generating that ourselves, like Colleen was talking about. And it doesn't matter if you guys put it into a capital project, that seems to be you guys. If you put it into Parks and Rec, that's you guys. Community development is you guys. Marketing, that's you guys. And I'm not seeing the return that we should see. Another thing on this chart, we talked about deficit, which is why I adamantly oppose this tax, right? We have a deficit already because of this frivolous spending. And most of us are living paycheck to paycheck. We simply can't afford another tax. So, I'm going to vote no for this one.
Hi. My name is Maru Leon, and I'm a resident and business owner here in town with my husband. And I am 100% for this 1% tax. And as a restaurant owner, and we have a little bit of everything, because we have rooms and tax, rooms and meals, we have alcohol, and we also have retail. So, we have all four taxes within one business. And I know it's going to affect, prices might have to shift a little bit. But I see the potential in what we, as a community, as a town, we've lived here now for 10 years. And we are in a, an amazing time right now. There's so much momentum. There's, we're in the cusp of all these amazing things happening. And I don't know how we're going to fund all these great possible ideas unless we come up with something like this. So, this is like an amazing opportunity for us to take this step and do it. And I plead with everyone to please add, for all, vote for all, all four taxes. Because if it went only to retail, if it went only to alcohol, that will mean nothing really to work with for a big idea project in the future. So, I think it's important that we look at it as like the entire amount, the entire bucket, to be used for what we want to do in the future of Bennington. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's see. I'm going to keep going along this way. Jim, you got your hand up? No. Reporters don't weigh in. Reporters from panel don't weigh in. Lynn, do you have anything? Matt? No? Okay. Well, there's plenty of time.
Hi. I'm Lynn Green, and I'm a business owner and a property owner in town. I, even though this will affect my business, I am 100% for this tax. I believe that this is a big opportunity for Bennington to really do something big. I think that a lot of times, as Benningtonians, we kind of feel like we're in the shadow of the rest of Vermont, and we hear about Stowe, and Manchester, and Woodstock, and all of these towns. Well, this is a chance for us to have a really big pot of money. And I did catch on to something you said, Don, that this needs to be something that is set aside, talked about, decided upon, not just mushed into the general fund. And I'm happy to hear that the select board is headed in that direction, that this is a pot of money that we can do something big with. I do think exactly what Maru said. If we don't go for all four, then this really isn't a conversation worth having. To get that 1.4 million that we're talking about, we have to support all four of these taxes. And I am very sensitive to the idea of whether Benningtonians will be paying this. And I just wanted to do a little bit of math here, that the rooms tax, which we can all agree are outsiders, tourists coming in, at 7.5 million, that's about 50,000 room nights. So, one and a half people per room, that's about 75,000 people that are coming in. We only have a population of 15,000. So, those are people from the outside, So those are people from the outside, not only paying the rooms tax, but buying things in our shops, you know, downtown, eating our meals. So it is a shared burden with outside tourists and even outside people from our neighbors in, you know, Housick Falls or Williamstown or people coming from other communities. So I think that it's a big opportunity to do something really big in this town. I think the other thing about what Shannon put up there is an example of year one, we have to remember that's just year one. I mean, if we could have that much money to fix Willow Park in year one, think what that next project would be that we could do in year two. Think of the caliber of marketing we could do, to your point, if we have these big chunks. And as a community, in these meetings, decide each year what this pot of money is going to be spent for. And I think we just look north to Manchester and see all the good things that they have done with their parks and some of their projects. So, big supporter of this, even though it will technically affect my business.
Thank you. Matt, do you want to say anything? No? Okay, so, let's see.
Ted. Ted. I'll go over here. Good evening, my name is Ted Katsumpis and I'm a 10-year resident of Bennington. I live at 145 Dewey Street. I am here to oppose all of the 1% option tax proposals for Bennington. I understand the need for municipalities to have more revenue. There are constant challenges in all areas of local government that increased revenue would certainly ease. There are other innovative ways to raise revenue, or perhaps, dare I say, reduce our overhead. I firmly believe that Bennington has the potential for a turnaround. The very exciting Putnam Block project, a thriving medical center and college, new dining establishments and more. There are also challenges. The vacant SVC campus in La Muster Center, the impending Energizer plant closure, along with the declining population of Vermont and the region. Bennington is struggling in many ways, and at the very same time on the verge of a comeback. Now is not the time for increased taxes. Do we really want to show how unfriendly we are to possible interested businesses and residents by increasing taxes? Bennington will raise revenue in this increased tax is passed, but at the expense of our businesses and local residents. Our neighbors make up the majority of business for the local pizza places and sandwich shops. The tax will be a double hit. First, to the consumers, our friends and neighbors, and second, to the business owner, who will undoubtedly see a decrease in business. We won't tax ourselves to success. I'm dubious of property tax relief. And if there should be one, it would be offset by this new tax. I like the words "local" and "option," but I'm disheartened that some of our elected officials chose the option of thinking increased taxes are an economic driver for our local community. I encourage my fellow residents of Bennington to vote no on all of the option tax proposals. Thank you.
I'm going to keep going along this row here. Anyone in, next to Ted, moving east here? I don't see any hands up. Come on up, Ryan. And then we'll go to the back room.
So my name is Ryan Hassett. I own a few businesses here in town. Originally, I was against this local option tax. Excuse me, and I started looking at what we could do with it. And I am definitely for it, but not as a Band-Aid. A lot of things that we can do, I did a research, and yes, we have a lot of people that are working paycheck to paycheck. And if you look at what this tax will do, it doesn't affect those people that much. If you're going to the grocery store, it doesn't affect you. If you're buying personal items, it doesn't affect you. So yes, I own a pizza house in town. And if you buy a $20 pizza, it raises it by 20 cents. So, what we need to do with the money is do more marketing with it. To lower taxes, the more people, the more businesses you have, and you had mentioned Energizer. Well, you can go back to Chemfab and all these different businesses that used to be in Bennington that we've lost. If you take 10 people and you have $100 and you divide that out by 10 people, they all have a big burden. If you divide that out by 20 people, it's still $100, but it's half the burden for everybody. If we market Bennington and say, hey, we want you to move here and start a business here, that will lower our property taxes and it will help Benningtonians out as a whole. If you take that money and you put it to lower taxes now, it is a Band-Aid. And it will lower taxes for a year, two years, three years, and then that money will go off into other things. So we have an option, just like the local option tax. We have an option now to take that money and do something great with it. As a lot of the people here have mentioned, we can market Bennington to businesses and have them come here. And it's not going to deter a business from coming here because we have a local option tax. We, they don't know about Bennington if we don't get the word out to them. And take some of that money and say, hey, if you come to us, we will help you get started. For the first year, we'll do this. Or we'll help you offset your tax with this money or something. To get residents to move here, people who are leaving elsewhere and want to retire here, or want to move here and work via the internet or whatever, there's a lot of different ways that we can market Bennington and utilize that money for that. If we take that money and put it in, I've always raised my kids to say, hey, when you get a pay raise, you will always use whatever money you make. But if you can take a pay raise and take half that money and put it away, and put it for something else, then you'll have some money in the future. You'll be able to do something. Because you don't have that money now and you're still surviving. Well, here, we have a huge opportunity with a pot of money to market Bennington and really have Bennington as a destination spot. We've had a lot of things with the bypass and everything else that has kind of stifled Bennington. Here's an opportunity to say, hey, we have so many things, Bennington Potter's factories here, and the monuments here, and the cover bridges, and Hemmings, and all these different things. Well, let's let everybody else know that Bennington is the destination. This is where we need to come. And that will lower the taxes for everybody else.
Thank you. So, moving to the back row. Anything from you?
From the back row?
Yes, sure. Yep.
Hi, I'm Tom Jacobs. I'm also a local taxpayer. And I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this matter this evening. Heard some outstanding, being in the back row, it's like coming to church late. Sometimes they put you in the front, but sometimes you can sneak in the back and you hear all the best of the sermon. We had some very, very good points that are presented to this board tonight. You know, in Bennington, there's been some exciting projects that are underway and some are even near completion. Frankly, we are at the cusp of something really special. By passing this tax and using it for large, substantial capital benefits for this community, that will effectively lower our real estate taxes. We cannot afford to do capital projects on the back of taxpayers. We're already overburdened. I won't even get into the confusing state component of our real estate tax. But frankly, this tax is not going to just automatically reduce our taxes. We've got to have a plan for the use of these funds so that we are actually going out into the world through marketing and otherwise to attract businesses and interest. Because frankly, those that are going to be investing in this community are going to be coming from outside. We are a community that has limited resources. We've already, we've got a high real estate tax bill every year already. We've got to do something that is of significant fashion through a collaborative effort from those outside. So I think I encourage passage of the tax and earmark the income for the benefit of substantial projects, not just to reduce our taxes. Because frankly, I think, as has been said, that's going to be a short Band-Aid approach to this whole thing. If we're going to make this a vital town, and we're already on the start of that, we're already at the cusp of that, that next project, we can't afford it without having it actually invested by a significant amount. And that cannot be at the taxpayer's expense. That's why I do encourage passage of this tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
What he said, what she said, what she said, what he said, what they said. This is going to be a good thing if you do it right. So I am very much in favor of this local option tax. But, I will say this, if we bring it in piecemeal, it's not going to do anything for us. And that's basically a repetition of what Tom said. If we think we're going to tinker with the engine when we need to do an overhaul, it's not going to work for us. So this has got to be a local option tax, the million-two, whatever it is. It's got to be used to do something big. Thank you for that. It's got to be used for something significant. It's got to be used to reverse the economic slump that's been in Bennington for about 35 years, and the demographic slump that we know has been here for the past decade. My one critique of what you've been saying is that you're very tentative about, well, for the first year, we'll use this for this and this and this, and then the next select board legislative session before the next meeting of next year, we'll figure out if we want to spend the money differently. If you are not willing to make a long-term strategic commitment, a vision commitment, to how you use the money, and by that I mean three to four years, you're not going to get anywhere. You're going to change something, every year you'll get no results. Sheila was talking about the Putnam Project. The Putnam Project is a shot to the moon. If you use this money right, you can use this to turn around the economic slump that we're in. And you can provide another thruster for that project to get finished more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, I'm looking to the back row here, going to the east. No? Yep, come on up.
Linda Fulsham. My husband and I own the bookshop on Main Street. And I just want to echo what a lot of other folks have said, that I'm 100% behind this options tax. And I really would be excited for something big to happen, for a big project to happen. I think the Band-Aid of lowering property taxes is not going to get us where we need to be and want to be. So I'm really in favor of earmarking this money for something special, something big, marketing in addition to other big projects. Because I think that's really the only way we're going to move the needle. And, you know, we're on Main Street. We see what's happening on Main Street. And I also understand how this tax will affect our business, but I'm still behind it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Sarah?
Hi, Sarah Perrin. I'm a resident citizen. I've changed my mind a couple of times on this. And I really, you know, a lot of us here, I've heard, have changed our minds on this as well. I'm liking what I hear from a lot of people here. And also, I want this to go through, and I think a lot of great things can happen with this, but I do want all four options to pass. Because I think if just one passes, nothing great is going to happen. And with the Putnam Project, I think that is going to be, just like you said, it's just going to go, it's going to be a rocket booster for that. So I want this to pass, but with a little more information about policy. I think right now the policy is a little sticky. So, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Betsy Greenewall. I'm a Bennington resident and I'm a local business owner. And I'm adamantly against the tax. I love what Sheila and Maru and everyone has been saying about the big pot of money for marketing. I have a business, I would love more marketing for our town. That would be awesome. I just don't think raising taxes for our local people is the way to do it. No one's really mentioned the things that are taxable. And I just wanted to make it apparent in this meeting, I just have a list of some things that are taxable. Clothing accessories, like sewing equipment and supplies, knitting needles and scissors, cosmetics, hair notions, handbags, jewelry, wallets, watches, sunglasses, these are all going to be taxable. Hygiene products, soap, cleaning supplies, shampoo, toothpaste, mouthwash, antiperspirant, sunscreen, humidifiers, air conditioners, there's a lot more. But I was just like pulling the things that I think all of us local residents will be buying all year. Sports and recreation equipment, we love our kids to participate in sports, but now you're going to have to pay tax on cleats, sports gloves, et cetera. If you have a, if you're a contractor or, you know, have a construction company, all of your protective equipment will be taxed. So, there's a burden on us. We're not Manchester. Manchester, you know, it's great for towns that bring in lots of tourism, but we're just not there yet. I always spend my money locally as much as I can, but I'm just not a fan of more taxes. It adds up. Your property taxes, as we know, might decrease, but I really don't think it's significant enough to make a big difference. I would love, all of the money, if this does pass, I would love all the money to go to marketing, but I don't think that's going to happen. And I agree with what Ryan and what everyone said, that we do need to make Bennington, everyone know Bennington is here and what we have to offer. So, I am, I really liked what Ted had to say. I agreed with everything he had to say. And I hope this doesn't pass because I just think it's going to add another burden. And I don't know how the money is going to be spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, I'm Peter Brady, local resident. Some of these ideas sound really spectacular. But what my fear is here, there is no commitment to any of this. We all just witnessed a presentation on this, you know, 50% tax reduction and 20% to debt. And at the end of it, we had the town manager say, well, this is just an example, we're not going to do that. We don't have any commitment to where this money is going. Now, I would remind the voters out there, what I would suggest is we slow our roll. Vote this down and let's look at it for a year. We've heard over the last few weeks, it's going to be on the ballot, and all of a sudden, it's a, you know, we've got to get it done, we've got to get it done. No, we don't. We need to know what we're doing. How does this affect the businesses on Main Street? What I would suggest, some of these proposals, you know, buying Southern Mount College, you know, we're down to three miles of road per year doing blacktopping. Maybe we want to do that for a few years. But to give this money over without having any specifics where it's going, I would remind the residents, we paid $450,000 for a salt shed, we were fined $21,000 because of where we put it. There had to be thousands of dollars of legal fees. We put a $350,000 splash pad on the busiest intersection in town that has now got to be ripped up and redone because there was no planning on this. And look at the little pocket part behind Fiddlehead. I know that was mostly donations and, but it's still $100,000 on a spot that three pickup trucks would fill up. We need to slow the roll on this. Bennington needs to take their time, have community interaction and see what we want to do with this before we vote on it. I urge all the voters of Bennington to vote down all four options this year. Thank you.
Okay. Nancy?
I'm 100% against the options taxes. We have seen a pattern over the past several years where the select board has waited until the very last minute to drop a major project or idea on us. In December, when Stuart announced the options tax, I said at that time, these discussions should have started months ago. There is nothing accountable about putting this information out two weeks before we vote. There's going to be a lot of questions, people are going to want to get answers, and you don't have time to get the answers out to us. When you said this is going to bring down our water and sewer included in that?
It could be.
Well, we had about an 8% increase this year, correct?
That's correct.
And we're going to have increases each year for the next four or five years. So basically, the water and sewer could cancel out what we're going to save on our property taxes.
Not if, not if the money is used for capital projects that are affected and paid for by the water and sewer systems.
Did anybody compare what Albany, North Adams and Pittsfield are charging for taxes compared to what we would be?
Albany's 8%. Massachusetts is 6.25.
Okay.
Build the Met of Massachusetts.
But we have a lot of people right now leaving Bennington to shop because we're so limited. I do try to shop locally, but I think more and more people, we don't know what's going to happen at the Kmart Plaza if we lose those stores. I mean, we're going to have more people leaving Bennington. And again, the decision on how this money will be spent will be made by the select board- And again, the decision on how this money will be spent will be made by the Select Board. It won't be on a ballot, correct?
That's what we're proposing right now, is that it be open process.
Okay, well, to have another major deal dropped on us at the last minute, it needs to be defeated. We deserved more information, and these discussions should have started months ago.
John, come on up.
My name is John Shanahan. I am the Director of the Better Bennington Corporation, and I am also a taxpayer. I moved here about 40 years ago, and I wasn't actually planning on speaking this evening, because through the BBC, we've held two meetings with our members already, just to get input and make sure that we're all talking facts instead of just heated debate based on things we're hearing on the street and things we're thinking. As you can tell through the audience tonight, lots of different opinions, but the bottom line is, we all want Bennington to do something. Something big, something more, something different, and that's the way it's always been. And if we don't start changing what we're doing, that's the way it's always going to be. And no matter what we do, 100% of that financial responsibility is on our shoulders. We have an opportunity with the option tax to share that financial responsibility with people who visit Bennington and come to Bennington and stay in our hotels, eat and drink in our community, and shop in our community. It was brought up that our sales tax is greater than Manchester, because we are already a greater retail center than Manchester is, which is surprising to a lot of us, but it's true. Since I've been here for about 40 years, I've heard 1 million times, without exaggerating, Bennington needs to do this. We need to change this. We need to improve that. And throughout all the Select Boards over 40 years, every single person on our Select Board would have done all of that if it wasn't for lack of funds. That's the same with our businesses. That's the same with our homes. And here's our chance to change it where 100% isn't on our shoulders, but it's also on the visitors. Marketing, it may affect our businesses. We're just discussing, it's 8% in New York, where some of us go to do our shopping, 6.25 in Massachusetts. If you look at the malls in New York where it's 8%, many of them are doing very well. You look at the 6.25% in Massachusetts, where the Berkshire Mall is now closed. So that is one way to gauge how that amount we're paying in tax, the 1% difference, doesn't really affect commerce. It should have been the other way around. We should all be rushing to Massachusetts to shop, yet it's not happening. If there is an impact on our local business based on increasing our sales tax by 1%, I agree with the entire audience here, that a majority needs to go to marketing to offset that. I agree too. Bennington's outdoor recreation, we do need to increase the marketing. Bennington's history, Bennington's arts, Bennington's everything. We are a destination, and it seems like for 40 years, we've just been counting our pennies, doing the best we can with what we got. Here we have a chance to change things and to say no, I hope we're ready to wring our hands and just take what we get for the rest of eternity. One more point, again, as a property owner, I feel it wouldn't be the most beneficial way to apply these additional funds to lower our property tax. It would be nice to happen, but it will end up disappearing. We'll get addicted to the amount we're applying to our property tax, and we either have to do that every single year, or as expenses continue to increase, as with everything else, we're going to have to have a major jump when this money runs out. If we do something transformational, something we can point at, something that is bringing additional people and additional money into town, then it's money well spent. Improving our parks, everybody wants that. More marketing, everybody wants that. What are we going to do with SPC, Energizer? All of that takes money and time to do it, and here's a chance to do all of that. So I really, listening to everybody, I don't think, I think, I think actually Sarah Perrin summed it all up. We've all been like this with this. To say no is kind of the end of the road for us. To say yes is to try something new. And everybody needs to keep in mind that if we say yes this year to this option tax, it's not forever. We have the choice to rescind it next year. So I say, let's try it. I know everybody's concerned about, well, how is it going to be spent? But for the past 40 years, I've voted for you guys, and I trust you guys as a representative to do what's best for our community. And if we have trust issues, then we all get to vote for whoever sits at that table. And thank you for giving us two opportunities. I don't feel rushed. We've been talking about this for months now. We can talk another year. We're not going to get any more information. Voting day's coming up. Let's give it a shot. If we make a mistake, change our mind next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. So Charlie, anything from you? No? Going that way, going that way? No? 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 All right. Well, I'm going to say, yeah, I'm going to come back to the front. I'm going to say, let's, it's 7:15. I'd love to, we've had an opportunity to hear a lot of different opinions. I'd like to go through again and give everybody a chance to have a second shot at it if they'd like. Does the Board have any comments they want to make in the interim? Or are you happy to hold your comments to the end, or?
This is therefore...
It's very, it's very difficult to sit on your hands, I know.
I know.
During some of this part, but, but it's a little bit what we, what we're really trying to do tonight.
I know, and I'm, I just, I want some clarification from you maybe, or, and that is, while it is true that right now, I don't think anybody knows, I don't know, and I'm sitting up here, how we would spend it, it is my goal, and I think it's our goal, that at least before March 3rd, and I'm sorry for the folks who are voting early, but at least well before March 3rd, people will know how this money will be spent by this Board next year.
Yes.
That's, that's our intent.
Yes.
I just want to underline that.
Is our intent not to determine that at the next?
Yeah.
Next week at the Select Board meeting?
I thought it was, a week from now, we will vote on how it is this money will be spent for at least the next year.
Yeah, and that's meant to be...
Based on the comments that we're...
Yeah, right.
I have a problem with that. That does feel really, really rushed, because you're basically making a decision about lowering property taxes, which is actually cutting the money in half, which we could use for economic development and cultural development. So you're, and...
Sheila, Sheila, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to hold your comments for now, okay? Just to keep order. Okay, thank you. So...
I just, I want it to be there, and I would also say, do not prejudge whether or not we're actually going to do what the town folks have suggested. I haven't bought into that yet, so don't go there yet. I understand. Well, all I can say is, for me, I, this is an open discussion, but by next week, it will not be an open discussion. It will be at least a decision. And that may seem like a rush job, but that's the way life is.
Well, if anything passes, we're dealing with the hypothetical here.
Yeah.
So if anything passes, it would be a year of transition.
Yeah, absolutely.
And something may pass, nothing may pass. So it's a little, it's a little bit difficult to, I think that the tension that we're working with here is that we heard from a number of people that they didn't want to vote on this without knowing how the money was going to be spent, and yet we don't know if it's even going to be approved yet. So we're in this difficult situation of not knowing, essentially encouraging the Select Board to count our chickens before they've hatched, as they say.
Correct.
So I think what we're trying to do here is to figure out, in this first year, what would be a balanced approach that, that caught most of the, most of the desires of people and the town Select Board, but that there would be a process whereby every year, every citizen would be able to have input, and the future Select Board, really importantly, would be able to have input. In other words, we don't want to, we have decided that we are not going to vote, we are not going to put this on the ballot in such a way that it permanently earmarks funds that future Select Boards can't change. So it feels like a point of democracy, that we elect people to office to make these difficult decisions. If, if we can it now, then future people on the Select Board will not have the options to respond to the public on what they think is important. So acknowledging that the timeline is a little bit tight, but that it's really a, a year of transition, and it's dealing with the hypothetical, whether or not this passes, I think that the answer is that we would like to have a very clear, to Mr. Brady's point, a very clear policy on how we would spend this funds in the first year, but that the next year, there would be clarity about what tax, if any, was coming in, and how the committee wants to spend it.
Exactly.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Bob, can I make a comment just to help clarify that?
Please do.
We have to remember that if, in fact, this passes in March, the tax won't be implemented until July 1 of 2020. The first payment would be a quarterly payment at the end of September. Then there would be a payment at the end of January, a payment at the end of April, and ultimately, the full amount of money would be received in June. So we have to remember that these, it's going to come to us in quarterly payments. If it's 1.2 million, a quarter of it will be available to us in September. We have time, even after the vote, for the Board to sit down and determine how we're going to use those funds that are going to come to us in a timed fashion. We won't have 1.2 million to divvy up on April 1st.
Right, no.
It simply won't be here. So there is time for the, the Board and the public to take a look at those funds and see how they best be used in the current fiscal year, and then the policy will tell us going forward how they will be used in subsequent years by the Board sitting at that time.
Okay, so let's start, let's start at the beginning again, and we'll run through the same route. If, I'll go through the first row, and second row, and third row, and, and if you have more comments, please bring them on. So Bob, anything from you? No? Laura?
I actually, I just...
Come on up.
Yes. I was thinking, I love the idea of having something fabulous happening, and using this money to really inspire us in, in town. Right now, there's nothing inspiring yet, but the way to get inspiration, I think, would maybe to have a process where, and it was mentioned, to have people propose uses for the money. And so we have so many organizations, we have people who could use the money for something big or medium size, and maybe to have a process of not just the Select Board deciding where the money goes, but opening it up to, like an RFP, at least for a certain amount of the money, and using that kind of process to get other people involved, other organizations or businesses to request money, matching money or something like that. So I think that would be a way to really just make it, and also, I would think that the Select Board should think of some inspiring projects on, on your own. I mean, what do we need? What would, what's our wish list? How do we, you know, what would be the best thing besides redoing Willow Park? What else would be really wonderful? So you can think of things, ask other people to think of things, and make a list. I think maybe that's maybe what you were sort of thinking of, but I didn't quite hear that part. And that, in other words, not just having people come to the meetings, the Select Board meetings the following year and having an open discussion. That's part of what you could do, but actually having written proposals that people have to put in and say, hey, this is, would be a great thing to do, and I want $20,000 or $100,000 to do it. Do we have it? That's my idea.
Okay, thank you. I guess Rose are a little bit funny here, but Rose, did you have something you wanted to say? Come on up.
It seems to me, why are we always counting on somebody else to bring money in?
Is that a, I don't understand, I mean, if that's a question, I don't understand it.
Well, it seems like we're always counting on somebody else to make things better and bring it in for the town. It's not working. First of all, anybody knows you can't spend more money than your, you know, that's pretty obvious. So it's, I just don't understand why we keep bringing other states in and handing this, handing that money. It's, it seems like a lot of people coming from somewhere else, and we're sharing it. Can't people here do that? Do things? You know, the town ain't like it used to be, and never will be. First of all, you got to help people, not only people that have money or can afford to lose money, because a lot of people don't. So why are you always spending money you don't have? I mean, that's not that hard to figure out. I mean, you got Massachusetts, you're bringing on them, and why are you always counting on somebody else to do the money, make the money for you, is kind of?
I neither understand the question nor understand how to, I mean, I don't understand anything about what she said, basically.
You don't want to...
But if anyone else understands what she's talking about, please have at it.
No, I'm sorry.
But we don't understand what you're talking about.
Why is, why are you always going somewhere else, spending money on things so you can have ideas? You're, you're spending money on that, like anything you do? Nobody in this town is smart enough to do that? That's just one example.
But Rose, we're asking people of this town what they think about a 1% tax on those four items, and we're asking the people of this town, if it were to pass, how would you want it spent? We're not asking anything from anybody out of state. That's, that's, you know, if, if there are other issues, maybe so, but not on this. This is not related to anybody out of state.
I don't, I don't understand.
Kevin, hang on just a sec. We'll, I'll get to you. Yeah, yeah. Rose, if you, if you can help us understand what you're saying, we'd like to understand it.
Well, you're always spending money you don't have, so why is anything ever going to get any better?
Do you mean spending money and then charging taxes?
Spending money, I mean, you got 8,000 different things that are going on all the time. Can't you just do a few? I mean, money is always going out and lots not coming in. Doesn't make sense.
Well, in fact, Rose, all of our funds are operating in the black. We're not operating in any deficits in any of our funds. So we're, we're spending money, yes, and we're raising money from generally ratepayers and taxpayers mostly, in order to do the things that the citizens demand, and that is to provide good services, governmental services, good highways, good water and sewer. Those things cost money, but we're not, we're not deficit spending. We're not spending money we don't have. We're spending money, I think responsibly, to make sure that the community gets what it needs in order to continue to survive. What these funds are, these funds are a new revenue source that would allow us to do something we can't do now.
It sounds good, but... It sounds good, but I don't believe it.
I'm going to keep going in order. Yeah, actually, you might be next though, depending on, Sheila.
I have something to say, but we'll go.
All right. Go ahead, Kevin.
I think what Rose was getting at is the fact that we're living in an unsustainable system. If you have a business that you're running, you can't spend $150 a day if you're only making $100. I think a lot of times you guys are putting the carrot before, before the horse here. You're counting on this outside revenue source coming in that doesn't exist. I love all these projects that people are talking about. I want a splash pad for our kids and all these things. We had a guy die underneath a bridge last week. We have a homeless or overdose every single day. There's things called priorities. And when you guys are spending our money the way that you are, I don't see any priorities. And again, I'm not seeing any return on this and you're not even trying to attract tourists. What you're trying to do is attract residents and businesses. Why in the hell would anybody want to come here if nobody's got any money to spend? Look at, we're on the cusp of what, I'm sitting in the audience trying to figure out what the hell you guys are talking about. We're on the cusp of implosion. Look at the closed businesses that we got downtown. Look at the major businesses going out. We've got nothing to offer, again, except for outdoor resources. And when we go around all this giant chunk of money that we're talking about now, it's a, it is a substantial amount. We don't get it as the people. You guys get it. And based on your results so far, I am not cool with that. Thanks again.
So let's go back, let's get back in order here. Sheila, did you want to say something else?
I wanted to say.
Please do come to the mic. I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to come to the mic.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it, I think that building the process and figuring out what, how we're going to develop wonderful ideas, how we're going to see the ideas and know what we're investing in, I think that's a very exciting and inspiring piece of process. And so I really hope, I mean, there's a lot, we could be, so we're taxing ourselves, that's essentially what we're doing. We're taxing ourselves, we have a device to do it, we can then accumulate money, we can accumulate the money and spend it after it's accumulated. So I'm in with the idea of us pooling money and then spending it. And I think basically the process of entertaining, when you were talking about, we, we expect people from elsewhere to come solve our problems, I really resonate with that, do you see? So to the degree that you were talking about that as an idea, that makes sense to me. If there's a pool of capital that people can apply for to do X, Y, or Z, building roads and building parks and build, and improving the wildlife and improving all of the natural resources, totally turns me on. That's great. So that's number one is that idea of basically taking this next year for a process. There's a part of me that thinks, no, let's vote this down and then let's like really spend the next year thinking about this and structuring this in a way that sells more of us on it. I mean, I'm already sold, but I really, really would love it. Would you please possibly consider, I know it's already on the ballot, so you can't change anything. That's kind of what's hacking me a little bit. But I would love it if we did 70% for debt reductions because that's a we thing. The trouble with basically passing out property tax reductions is that that's an, each one of us separate thing and it disappears. I mean, and we're then going to have to either let it be there forever or we're going to have to take it away. And we all know what a politically difficult situation that is, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. I just, I think that all the discussion here points to the fact that the people in Bennington, the citizens, property owners, they're expecting a break on taxes from this money. Business owners, which I agree with a lot of, we do have to reinvent Bennington. We, we do have to bring in investments and businesses that, that provide a return on our investment, absolutely. The problem with this is that citizens that are being asked to vote for this are expecting one thing, businesses are looking for something different and, and I just think that at this point, we should have a clear vision of exactly where the next five years with this money would look like and what we would be able to do with it if we're being asked to, to pay an additional tax. And I think, you know, I heard people mention putting it back into the Putnam Block. We all hope the Putnam Block, you know, pans out to be a great thing for downtown Bennington. The problem with putting that money toward the Putnam Block investment would be that in the, in the prospectus for, for the Putnam Block, it clearly states there's no return on investment for many years into the future. So how would that help the struggling economy in Bennington? There's just so much information that needs to look, be looked at, so many projections and towns and the differences between Manchester and Bennington are night and day. Bennington has 15,000 citizens, Manchester 4,400. That, that is a huge disparity in itself and, and most of their sales absolutely come from tourism. The rooms, meals, and alcohol is the big portion. In Bennington, it would be the opposite. So it would be on the back of taxpayers already burdened and, you know, things like the sewer project, that could have been done 20 years ago with grant money and we could have had it for basically free rehabbed. And now we're, we're spending millions of dollars to get it fixed. I just think without a more permanent solution and, and long-term prospectus on where this money would go, I don't think it's the right time for Bennington. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Working my way east, anything else coming this way? Maru, are you? No? Lynn? Back row? Come on up.
Again, I would just, say again, you listen to everybody in here, there's no consensus here. Slow your roll, say no on all four articles and let's start looking at this thing seriously over the next year.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for your comments. Other back row, Nancy, are you all set? No? Anything else? Any comments from you? No? Okay. Well, I think it's probably not a bad time for us to begin to wrap things up here. I'd like to, I'd like to give board members an opportunity to say something if, if you'd like to say something. And maybe since I didn't tell you I was going to do this, maybe I could start and give you a little time to pull your thoughts together. It is true that there are two very different concepts being put forward here on this local options tax. Very, very different, polar opposite concepts. So one side is saying, I only want to support this if we take all that money and do something special with it. And the other side is sort of saying, we really need to reduce taxes. And the way I look at it is this, we have about a $14 million municipal budget, right? Not quite, about 14 million. And if we, if we raise 1.2 million dollars and we use it for something new, something we've never invested in before, that's on top of the 14 million that we're already spending. So that, so we're looking at, we're looking at essentially a new tax to the town of Bennington if, if you put it back towards that 14 million, you reduce the 14 million that needs to be raised from property taxpayers and therefore it's a lower tax rate. Now, I think it's a very compelling argument that if we don't invest in ourselves, we're not going to get anywhere. So I think that that's a very legitimate argument. And it feels to me like what this board has to balance out is the two desires at the same time. One on the part of the taxpayer who just says, my taxes are too high and I'm sick of it. I want something done about my property taxes. And then another whole set of constituents that feel like Bennington really needs to invest in itself, Bennington really needs to take off and we need to make some big change. And those, those two things frankly are, are quite different. And so if this local options tax does come in, I think we have to philosophically decide where we want to be on that spectrum between those two opposite things. So for me, tonight was great because a lot of really thoughtful comments came out. I really appreciated the fact that people were very, very nice in their delivery and that it was a well, well-delivered evening, but there are a lot of things about this that are difficult. And I think at the end of the day, in my mind, it's going to get down to a fairly simple thing. Should taxpayers be paying for everything? Property taxpayers be paying for everything? Or should there be some balance between property taxpayers and consumer taxpayers? And that, that to me is the, is the very basic philosophical decision that we're coming down to. So other, other board members, what are you, what are your thoughts?
Well, I mean, this has been a really great forum and I really do thank everyone for speaking up and speaking their minds and asking questions. I mean, it really is democracy in action and that's really, really wonderful. I, I do think this is an opportunity for us and it's an opportunity for us to think bigger than we've been able to in a while perhaps. It's also an opportunity for us to allow those who benefit from Bennington, who don't necessarily live here, help us think big and help us create something that we cannot do on the backs of property taxpayers. So, you know, I do think this is an opportunity. I, I think this has been a particularly wonderful evening. I, I think we've all heard ideas that are exciting and make us, make us want to go out and do something. So, you know, I, I think we all have a lot of things to think about now, but I do think this is an opportunity that we should not pass up.
Thank you. Jean? Bruce? Jeanie?
I'll go, I'll go. The first thing I'd like to say is I have always believed that the best decisions come from disagreement. I think that that's why I think this evening was particularly interesting and educational is because I think because of the comments we heard tonight, we're going to come to the best decision we can come to as a board and hopefully the community will re-watch this, this meeting and really digest it as well. So disagreeing is not bad and this is a perfect example of that. And I just, I made some notes on my, my comments are not going to be cohesive, but I'm just going to sort of give you a stream of consciousness. I think it was Sheila who said, you know, think big, think big. And I'm thinking, we don't know how to do that. It's going to take time to learn, assuming this passes and I, and I quite frankly hope it does. It's going to take us time to learn to be able to think about something transformative. We're not used to being able to do that. So I look, and I, and that's a really good problem to have is, that's, that's fine with me. I'm happy to, I'm happy to take on that task. I also think that this is an amazing opportunity and I really do feel like we would be foolish to not, to not pass all four of these. I think the proof is in the pudding. There are 20 communities that have done this already and it's been tremendously successful where there's no reason to think that we wouldn't be successful also. There's no evidence out there that proves that point. So to me, it's, it's not a risk at all. I, I loved what Michael said about, Michael Keen, when he said, you know, having a vision and have, you know, multi-year plan in place. And I really like that. On the other hand, I really like the flexibility of that this would allow, that if something, let's hope this doesn't happen, but if something catastrophic happened or we had to plan for something, we would be able to do that too because of the flexibility that's built into this. I just have faith that the residents of this town and this board and future boards will be thoughtful and, and make the best decisions they can make for the future of the town, you know, and, and spend this money wisely. And, and, and I do believe there, no matter what we do and how we balance it, there will be something in this for everyone and we will all benefit from it. Whether it's our property tax reduction ultimately or a beautiful new facility, new trails, there will be something in this for everyone to enjoy and be proud of. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jean. Bruce?
Couple of things. You may know or not know that I'm, I've been a reluctant follower of this tax. I'm, I'm not a strong proponent of, of the tax, particularly on retail sales. And I can think of all kinds of reasons to be against it and I can think of all sorts of reasons to be in favor of it, which is one of the reasons why I was a strong proponent of putting it before the voters and putting all four in, in separate votes so that we would assess how they, how the voters feel about the tax. I myself am still open and if you want to try to persuade me on my vote, I'm, I'm happy to be persuaded. But for me, and you may also know this, I am a process person and the process here, I think, is critical and I think tonight was a step in the right direction. I think it's, it's important to have these kinds of conversations and, and I learned some things tonight or, and was jotted to think of some things tonight that I, that was making me uncomfortable about the, at least the current iteration of our policy that we've, that is being drafted for potential adoption next week. All that is, that's not my phone, thank goodness. That's okay. That's all right.
Happened to us all.
It does. The, the process of how we go about making the decision or has to balance, my balancing is not the balance that you're thinking of between property tax and outside folks who utilize town services. I think it's pretty clear that I would want some benefit from folks who come into town utilizing services and also having them pay taxes through a sales tax of some sort. But for me, the balance has to do with who gets to make the decision. And that to me is a harder balance to try to figure out. I think, I am, I have been pleased to hear some beginning conversations about matching funds and the idea of using matching funds or creating a matching fund or creating a process by which we can dispense matching funds for projects which are exciting. And, and yes, I'm a, my balance is between, is that a select board function only or is that a select board function after a review by a larger community panel? I think that's where I'm thinking. So, so any decision that I end up having to make next week about this, the use of these funds is absolutely provisional. And probably my inclination is to try to not designate as much as we can not designate. I know that will disappoint some and it will, but I also think that, that the property taxpayers of this town deserve to have some relief, even briefly. So I'm persuadable, so if you want, stop me on the street, stop me in the grocery store and persuade me. That's all I have, other than to say thank you for everybody who participated tonight, whether you spoke or whether you didn't. It's helpful.
Thank you, Bruce. Stuart, any last words from you before we wrap up tonight?
No. I, I think, I agree with the folks on the board. I think this was very, very helpful. It clearly gave the two sides of the picture. It clearly gave the two sides of the picture. And I tend to agree with Bruce. I think we need to develop the process once we know what we're dealing with. And we won't know what we're dealing with until the vote takes place.
There's a little bit of a chicken and egg thing there, there's no question about it. Yeah. All right. Well, so the next, next meeting for us will be next Monday at our regularly scheduled board meeting. It will come up as part of the rest of the agenda, so it will not be the only thing we're covering, but we will talk about it next Monday, right here at 6 o'clock, and along with the rest of our agenda. So, I'd like a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.